April the 19th, 2021, called the meeting to order at 4:00 PM. We had changed our last meeting date to this date because it was not a big agenda. So thank you for that and sorry for inconvenience. I'll ask members any additions or deletions to the agenda? I'm not seeing or hearing anything. So I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda as presented for Monday, April 19, 2021, regular meeting of council circulated amended, move by.
Counselor Valance.
Counselor Lake.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Your worship, if you could just rename the mover and second or just so that I can make sure I have it right?
Certainly Counselor Valance and Counselor Lake, Counselor Valance moves, Counselor Lake second. All in favor, Carrie, thank you much. I'm not seeing anybody's visual, is it me or is it everybody else's cameras are off?
Mine's off right now just because of the whole, the day we're having today. Do you want my?
No, 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 just what I, no, it doesn't matter, I just know, want to make sure everybody's working, fine. Okay. Just because when I say, say somebody called, said, I just see that now, you see a funny symbol, who's that? Counselor Lake, everybody doesn't come up, there's no names coming up on the screen, thank you.
So I'm, I think that I'm on your worship.
You were, now you are, yeah, thank you. Okay. Okay, no problems. Up next, disclosure of interest. Hearing done, I have a motion here that council hereby adopts the minister, we're at a regular meeting of council, were held on Monday, March the 22nd, 2021, and a special meeting of council were held on Monday, April the 5th, 2021, is circulated amended, move by.
Counselor.
So I got Counselor Jingra and Counselor.
Counselor Tibucci.
Thank you. Any questions, arrows, admissions of those minutes? Hearing done, I'll call a question on favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie, thank you very much. Up next, we have unfinished business from a previous council meeting in regards to the Fire Marshal's Safety Grant Program. Copy 12 members. Mr. Skorchinsky are just going to actually pass the motion or is there an update in that?
Uh, no, just for information purposes for council, this was brought to the last council meeting as an information item. Subsequently, we received information that an official motion of council has to be passed to accept the funding. In our case, it's $5,400, that'll go towards increased training opportunities for our local firefighters. So today's just a formalization of accepting that funding from council's perspective.
Okay, thank you, I do have a motion here that council hereby authorize administration to enter into a Fire Marshal's Grant Transfer between the Town of Marathon and the Office of the Fire Marshal with regard to the Fire Safety Grant Program in the amount of $5,400, move by.
Counselor.
Counselor Lake.
Okay, Counselors Jingra and Counselor Lake, thank you very much, any questions on that? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Up next, we have a report on appointment of committees and boards, I have one appointment to a board, local board. This appointment here is for the council hereby accepts the attached report of recommendation, the appointment of committees and boards. This was for the Property Standards Committee and Committee of Adjustment, and that the appointment be approved is presented in the report, and for that the appointment be in place until November the 14th, 2022. And this is Mr. Stephen Humphries for Marathon in regards to the appointment to the Standards, Property Standards Committee, Committee of Adjustment. Can we move a second for that motion?
Counselor Tibucci.
Counselor Tibucci and Counselor Valance, any questions of that appointment?
I have one, your worship.
Sure.
I'm just, we recently had a minor variance committee meeting, and I'm just wondering, I believe we still need a couple of members for that committee, I'm just wondering if the CAO might be able to highlight any other positions that are vacant and just again make that plea for, for folks. It's great to see Mr. Humphrey volunteering, but if somebody else, there are positions available.
Yeah, so, so this would put us, so Committee of Adjustment does deal with minor variances, of course, as well as issues related to our official plan, so minor variance would be one of them. So this will make the committee standing at four members, and we have interest from another member from the community, which would put us at five, two members being council, three from the public, which is a good, solid committee formation. So we're in that process right now and we hope to round it out over the course of the next couple of weeks.
Thank you for that, anything else? It doesn't hurt though for anybody in the public out there that's listening to contact the municipality for interest in any one of our boards or committees throughout the operation of the municipality. We know that the Marathon Humane Society just closing up its doors because there's not enough volunteers coming forward, so we definitely need the people in the community to get involved, Counselor Valance.
Yeah, your worship, for administration, is the application for the committees, boards and commissions form found on the Town of Marathon website? So if interested individuals are interested in filling one out and submitting it, can they find it on the website?
When there's an open call for committees, certainly it's on, it could be done via the website, via email or submitted in person. There currently aren't any calls, but that doesn't preclude anybody, any member of the public inquiring when those opportunities do arise. Certainly a little more challenging these days in coordinating committees and meetings with virtual technology. So, you know, we haven't been as focused maybe as we have been in the past, but if somebody has an interest, they can just contact the town via the deputy clerk and we'll certainly respond.
Thank you, Counselor Jingra.
So just something I wanted to highlight, there's a project out of Thunder Bay called Women in Politics, and they're working on trying to bring more women to council, but also to municipal boards. So right now they're looking for mentors and mentees, so I've signed up as a mentor myself, but I just wanted, thought this would be a good chance to share that with the community, that if there's a woman out there interested in council in the future or on a board, maybe I'll send the, the link to, to the town to administration to post on our Facebook and we can share it that way too.
Thank you, and by all means, there is an election coming up in, in the fall of '22. Seems like a long way away, but really we all know it's not, so the interest is now a time to get, to get into it and see if you're interested in something like that, thanks for that. Okay, with that being said, I'll call a question on favor?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you, Carrie.
If I make, Mayor, your camera's off, I don't know if it's important for yours to be off, but you're no longer visible to at least me, so.
Yeah, my camera's working fine, so I don't know if it's your system, Counselor Tibucci. Okay, yeah, so does everybody else go okay, can you see me?
Yes, I can see you.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, up next, we have the administration reports reported on 21 operating and capital budgets, copy to all members. Mr. Verbal?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The draft 2021 operating and capital budget was presented at a special meeting of council on February 1st. Since that time, council's input as well as additional information and details have been incorporated into the budget. Significant changes include the continuation of recycling, increasing the contribution to the library to the amount of $145,000, and assuming recreation revenues will be similar to 2020 in light of having these, having to close the facilities for an extended period of time. The overall objective of the 2021 budget is to maintain the current level of goods and services while keeping any increase to the tax levy to a minimum. Due to the pandemic, the province deferred reassessment in 2021. Property values in this year is the current value assessment or CVA as of January 1st, 2016. There's no change from 2020 property values other than supplemental omitted and reduction notices from impact that occurred last year. The overall assessment, including exempt properties, increased 2.84%. The increase to the residential class was 3.8%. Majority of the increase is the temporary work cost established at Stevens Avenue. The commercial class decreased by two point, sorry, $1.2 million primarily due to the reclassification of the DH Malta exempt. The industrial class increased 16% because of the expansion of Hydro One substation, and the mines increased by 7% with the updated employee allocation. The budget being presented today contains the bundle of programs and services that council has agreed to be delivered to the residents of Marathon during 2021. As listed on Schedule A, operating requirements are $4,457,948. In addition to these programs and services, $3,412,000 of capital work is contained in this budget. To pay for these capital projects, $700,000 won't be generated through taxation. The remaining will be funded through government grants, long-term financing and reserves. The province has set the education levy for the various classes. The combined education to be collected on behalf of the various school boards is $433,000. The tax levy of $5,591,955 is an increase of 2.6% from 2020. The additional tax revenue from the work camps can skew the comparison between 2020 and 2021. So the details below, the 2020 levy includes the tax collected on the work camp. The municipal tax rate has increased 0.3% for all classes. Educational rate for the residential classes remain the same at 0.153%, while the commercial and industrial rates decreased from 0.98% to 0.88%. So residential class, the total amount collected will be 2% more than last year. Multi-res will go up just under 10%, commercial a decrease of 7%, and the industrial class will see an increase of 7%. Overall, the increase will be 1.5%. Financial implicated, sorry, financial implications are outlined in the 2021 current and capital budget. So the options are to approve the budget as presented or approve it with amendments. Administration recommends that option A be approved in that bylaw 2002, adopting the 2021 operating and capital budget be approved as presented.
Thankfully, I reported, I do have a motion here that council hereby accept the attached report of recommendation on 2021 operating capital budgets, and for that the appropriate bylaw be adopted, approved in the 21, 2021 operating capital budgets later in this meeting, move by.
Counselor Tibucci.
Counselor Lake.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Verbal, hands up, I see Mr. Counselor Lake.
Yeah, thank you, worship, thanks, Mr. Verbal, for that report, and congratulations to administration for working through a difficult process, given all the changes that are going on in our world right now. One of the ways that always makes it easier for folks to sort of think about it, Mr. Verbal, is how much is each household going to pay extra, because I think that's the bottom line, right? Percentages don't matter as much as dollars, so I think you've crushed those numbers. Can you just let us know what the average household is going to see in terms of an increase?
We don't use average, we use the term median, so it's on the bell curve, what's at the, on the, the top of the bell curve. So the median value, value of a single family dwelling in Marathon is $89,000. So if your house is worth $89,000 according to MPAC, you will see an increase of $7 in taxes to approximately $2,500 for the year.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else hands, I don't see anybody else's hand? Oh, Counselor Lake again, no?
Yeah, yeah, this one's maybe more, more of a general question for, for Mr. Verbal, so I'm just, I try to get my head around the percentage classes now. I mean, I think we're all hopeful that there's going to be some more industrial development in the municipality, especially looking across the highway. If we were to see a growth in the industrial sector, what does that do in terms of taxation to the average resident? Will that take some of that burden that's been moving on to them and, and bring it off? Or do things sort of stay the same? Just looking for that, you know, as we look into the next few years, what that could bring in terms of residents?
It all depends on how council wants to take advantage of that increased assessment. Assessment, getting your tax rate is you take how much you levy on the top divided by your assessment. So if you get more assessment, then your tax rate is lower. Or you can keep your assessment, your assessment is higher, so you can spend more money otherwise.
To use for our aging infrastructure.
Yes, good answer. I see no other hands. A couple, a couple of notes I just want to make mention of, so in your, your first paragraph, significant change including construction, consultation and recycle, sorry, continuation of the recycling program and increase in contribution to the Marathon Public Library. There was an increase, but the request from the library was $160,000, but from 2020, there was a substantial increase because of the COVID-19 impacts it had with the library closure. The budget in 2020 was 105, just for the clarification to the public, they requested 160, we reduced it to 145, so there actually was a bit of a reduction in the request from the Marathon Public Library this year in the overall budget process. So that's just a clarification item. Secondly, this is a wonderful year and not in regards to the COVID, it's a terrible year for us as the impact it has on our mental health and our community being locked down. But MPAC has not reassessed, this is a normal year for reassessment. And we know in our community, we had a lot of demand for houses. So because when demand goes up, supply gets short, prices go up. So now going into '22, and MPAC decides to do a reassessment to our municipality from 2016 assessment years, there's going to be quite a shift, I believe, in overall assessment values to the residents' homeowners. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Verbal, but I see that is going to be an impact in the 2022 year budget. So having that industrial tax base coming on board in '22 or '23 or '24, if all likelihood, if things go well with that new mine proposal, that'll be an awesome opportunity for the council of the day to say, look, we had a real weird influx of, in, you know, purchasing our homes drove the assessments up quite high, because we can all see that in our community, what it's done to the community pricing, and maybe we can maybe adjust those, those, not we, but the council, they can reflect and adjust that as possible, correct?
It's province-wide, throughout the province, throughout Canada, house prices are going higher, and that's a dilemma that most municipalities are facing, is you're dealing with numbers that are six years old. And once MPAC gets to go ahead to re, give new numbers, those numbers will be faced for an additional year, so that's the concern we have too when we start. Hopefully, we won't have too many discrepancies or challenges that go to the assessment review board, but you're going to have to talk about the change from 2016 to 2022.
Absolutely, okay, thank you for that, Counselor, Counselor Valance?
Yeah, when we look at the change in assessment, are we going to see a positive change? Or is it going to be more of a constructive change? Like what should we be kind of foreshadowing for when that assessment is rejigged and MPAC comes out with new numbers? Will that be a positive change for the residents or will that be? And this is more so just a learning question for myself, because obviously this is one of the first times I've experienced this.
It all depends on which year they choose to say, as of January 1st, this date, this is what we determined to be. I've seen housing prices going up substantially. When I first started 14 years ago, average house was $80,000, and now we're pushing 110, 120. And so, and all depends on how long the COVID after effects are. Some commercial businesses may have their assessment brought down significantly lower. Again, assessment is just one tool, and so we might see again the gradual shift more to residential. And that'll be where, once we have those numbers, council will have to see what is their target increase for the whole municipality versus just the residential tax class.
Yes, before I go to Counselor Tibucci, so for Counselor Valance too, so when you consider a 3% tax ratio is what we need for residential taxation, so if your house assessed $100,000, you're going to pay the municipality $3,000 in taxation. Mr. Verbal is absolutely right, if by 2020, the, sorry, MPAC comes out with a 2020 number, the residents might not be too harsh to hit. 2022 number, you could see some major changes in the residential assessments and residential tax rates because of, depends on that year of assessment, that's going to be key for sure. Counselor Tibucci.
Yeah, just one note also too is that we have to understand, and I think Mr. Verbal stated it well, the assessed value is only one tool we use to do it. And everyone is within their right, if they think their assessed value is wrong, is to appeal those decisions. I worry more about what we would consider commercial, given the coming out of COVID. So I would caution or advise commercial property owners or whatever is to really look at their numbers and their assessments moving forward in the new assessment year. The only other thing I, I would like to mention also on this topic is we require X amount of dollars, and it's all depends on assessed value or not, of how we're going to collect it. So, you know, as much as we can worry for the homeowners or what their assessed value is, we have to look at the needs of the municipality as the bottom line. You know, are we going to garner that extra money or whatever it may be? And remember, we've also had times when we've lost assessment and we've had to tighten our belts per se. So, you know, it's just one thing to be aware of, but it's also one thing for council to be aware of that no matter what happens, we still need to run the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Skorchinsky.
Thanks, your worship, just a couple of things I'd like to point out to council with respect to the budget that I think are important to note for the public. You know, and the first is with respect to municipal taxation, MPAC's done a really good job of revamping their website. You know, municipal taxation is a bit difficult to understand. So I would encourage residents, you know, if they, they have questions or want to learn more about how local assessment works is to visit the MPAC website, there's some really good presentations there. Second, for, for council, you know, one of the major items that we're obviously experiencing in 2021 and is increasingly becoming more frustrating as Ontario seems to change their decisions on a daily basis is the loss in recreation revenue. You know, we've already budgeted $114,000 loss for 2021, and we're expecting that if things continue, i.e. like no golf available, that's fundamentally going to impact the budget. So those are things we, we can't foresee, but that's, that's something for council to be aware of. Two other items to highlight, council will see that there's not a lot of capital in 2021, and this kind of follows suit with 2020, both being pandemic years. But, you know, that's not because we don't have a lot of capital on our books. We brought forward a very, I think, fair budget this year to the residents, but capital is something we're going to have to address in the coming years as it was pointed out that we have aging infrastructure that requires replacement, and you can't put it off forever. So I just want council to note that. And the other item that's really becoming challenging for municipalities, and I'm sure it's been discussed at the AMO level, is the increased insurance premiums municipalities are having to pay. As an example, we've seen our insurance rates go up 40% this year for the Town of Marathon with zero control over how that happens. And that's really based on the regime we're, we're under here in Ontario, which is joint and several liability. So, you know, those are some things that are very challenging in the budget process that we don't have any control over, and I did just want to highlight those particular items because they're things we need to address on a continuing basis.
Thank you for that, Counselor Lake.
Thanks, your worship, I just wanted to, I think Mr. Skorchinsky hit on two really important ones. I know AMO is taking aim at joint and several liability, but as a municipality, is there some way that we can? You know, I, I think there was a big pushback in the law enforcement community about enforcing COVID restrictions, and the government walked those back, they walked back some of the playground stuff that didn't really make any sense. I would argue, in our case, not letting people golf is ridiculous. It's one of the few things you can do outside safely, you're social distance, you know, it's a facility that ought to be able to run, so is there a way that we can put some pressure and, and at least, you know, maybe get the, the government to rethink that particular, especially for small municipalities, right? It's not like we're a big, you know, Southern Ontario golf course with thousands of people coming in. It's a pretty isolated and not a ton of people, it just seems like it's one of those things we could offer our residents that would be safe to do.
Yeah, it's a, it's a frustrating process, as you know, through the NOMA Board and AMO Board as well, we tried to divvy up the province many different ways regards to COVID-19 for addressing funding models and, and policies. The insurance is a big thing, and the golf course is another big thing, all recreation facilities. As of Friday, I think there was 37 or 8,000 cases in Perry Sound, east to the Ontario Quebec border, and Perry Sound to the Manitoba, there was 403 active cases. So yeah, we know from week to week and month to month, there's going to be variances for sure, and we've experienced that, and we went to the media and we talked about that, Counselor Lake. You know, our community, for example, was zero cases at the beginning of March, 17, two and a half weeks later. So yeah, but at the same time, we knew how to monitor it, work with our groups and agencies, and get those under, under control and move forward. Right now, we have, as of Friday, I don't have the updated numbers today, but I think there was three active and one new. So yeah, we have issues in a small community in Northern Ontario, but we also understand the importance of mental health and getting outside and recreation. So we'll continue to push that, that, whether we'll have any traction or not, that's another question. Counselor Tibucci.
Going on that same note there, I mean, tennis was also included, baseball, and there's various other outdoor sports. Would it be, I guess, advantageous for us and other communities to kind of develop a plan or a pushback about that recreation? Because it's not just golf, it's tennis, it's other issues, you know, surrounding recreation. The playground thing where they backed off, that was, I guess, spearheaded by mental health issues and getting kids out and active. But if we could do an inventory of what we feel we could operate safely, kind of get that kind of benchmark and kind of add it down, and then move that forward, because we also have the conference coming up this, at the end of the month, that maybe we can present some kind of things or some kind of dossier or, or fact-finding solution that we can see homemade in Marathon, you know, that we could at least put on the table and say, you know, if we do this, you know, to, to monitor people, make sure it's one per card or only families per card, or encourage walking, so they're, you know, you don't have to worry about that close contact beside each other. Tennis is another example, I know you, they're saying now it's the, you know, your expiration or the droplets, but you're, you know, a net apart, you know, so that, those kind of things, you know, we could develop a safe plan to open these things, and I think it's something we can present to, you know, the conference at the end of the month and say, you know, this is what we developed. Internally, we've developed it, but, you know, let us test it, let us see if we can, you know, come forward and move some kind of action. Because we've always been forward thinking about, here, let's find a home solution. This is the parameters we're going to get with our recreation coordinators and with our, you know, staff, and say, this is how we would like to operate it, you know, let us test this kind of theory out. It's worth a try, and you know, by May, when we open, maybe it's over and maybe it's not, right?
Okay, thanks for that comment, Counselor Tibucci, I know Mr. Skorchinsky has said it, but quickly, as you know, we, we had great plans for Marathon, and Marathon is a leader within the region to show that we can do things safely with our arena, our golf course last year, as well as our snow pool, you know, tennis courts including. So we can do the right things, we can present a plan, but I think the next avenue is to go to Dr. DeMille again and present it, and, and through NOMA, at the end of the month is a great opportunity, but we'll, we've done all those things already in the past, and it seemed like we didn't get much traction, but we certainly will do it again and present a plan, and I know Mr. Skorchinsky could probably agree to that, but we'd like to say something as well, Mr. Skorchinsky.
Yeah, just two comments, and, and, you know, one around golf and certainly, you know, it's a popular sport in Marathon, but it, there's actually a report that, that was out today by the Golf Association of Canada, that in 2020, golf was a record year in Canada for the number of rounds played. And there was some research done by that association that showed not one case of COVID resulted as, from a round of golf. So there are some really good materials out there around, around golf that we can certainly reference. And just with respect to our other facilities, you know, we've developed all the plans, right? This is the second time we've been through this, if not the third time. You know, we, we know how to keep our residents safe and operate our facilities. So, you know, maybe this is an item that NOMA can address, you know, at the Minister's Forum next week, and certainly, you know, if we're able to offer, you know, our guidance from our reports, you know, certainly Marathon would be happy to do that.
Okay, so thank you for that, so I will reach out to Dr. DeMille and see if there's an opportunity at least to have a discussion. We will have a meeting with her next week as well, we have an annual, sorry, this week coming. We have a weekly meeting with her and that could be a discussion as well. And we'll go there and we'll try something at the end of the month with the NOMA AGM. So all that being said, we're on the budget motion. With the mover and seconders permission, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you, before I accept that, I want to just thank administration, great, great job, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Skorchinsky, it's a very, very thin budget in regards to capital, we have a lot of capital work to do. I just met this afternoon with AMO Task Force for Northern Ontario. I just met this afternoon with AMO Task Force for Northern Ontario in regards to the federal gas tax and infrastructure enhancements and rebuilding through the asset management plan. They're very aware of it, but we still need consistent funding, consistent model from the federal government to continue to rehab our infrastructure in our communities. So thank you for all that. Kerry, okay. Up next, we have a report on the amendment policy municipal flag use in regards to that policy. Sorry, I just got to pull it up. Ms. Lees?
I'm here.
Thank you. Go ahead.
What's something to follow up with after the budget meeting is a policy on flags?
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. At the regular meeting of council held on Monday, March 22, members requested that the town's flag use policy, which is policy AD17, be amended to include to include the length of time a pennant will be allowed to be flown at the town hall. So policy AD17 is attached and section 3J has been added, which restricts the length of time a pennant will be flown at the town office to five working days. There are no financial implications. The options are to accept the policy as presented or to accept the policy with amendments. Your administration recommends that option A be selected and that policy AD17 flag use be approved as presented.
Thank you very much. I do have a motion here that council hereby accept the attached report and recommendation on the amend the amendment of policy number AD0017 municipal flag use and further that the policy AD0017 be approved as presented with a copy of the policy being placed in the town's policy guideline menu. Move by.
Councillor Valance.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Lees on that? No hands? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, councillor Lake?
Sorry, just I I was going through and I couldn't see Ms. Lees. Can, so the 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 pole that will hold the the flags, the pennants, sorry, could, can they actually hold more than one pennant at a time? Is that okay? Like if we had two requests for a pennant, we could accommodate that or is it one at a time?
Um, I'm actually not really sure. Maybe Mr. Hishka can answer that. I know how it how it attaches. It only seems to be one there. So, Mr. Hishka, is there a possibility of having two, that more than two?
It's not equipped for two right now, but it's, we may be able to make modifications. But the lanyard, I guess that's what you'd call it, the lanyard inside the pole only has so much motion with with a bunch of extra clips on it. We may not get to be able to lock it at the desired place once we change the full length of motion.
So, so as as we spoke more in the past with, I think, with the request for flag raising and pennant raising, we just, we addressed the amount of the policy and we fly the one at a time for a day, a week, and then that's it, and the next person could come. I know there might be conflicts somewhere along the way of the same same date or week that they they both want to represent the the actual event or organization, but we'll have to work on that or deal with that as they come forward. Okay, so with the permission of the mover and a secondary, call a question. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Great, Kerry, thank you very much. I don't have a motion here for check runs. I look in my pile, I don't see it, but I will have, I'll read it out, that the following motion for approval of check runs to the accounts payable for $1,391,486.57 and payroll in the amount of $135,401.28. Move by.
Councillor Lake.
Councillor Jengra.
Thank you very much. Or any questions of those accounts payable and payroll? Hearing none, call a question. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, Ms. Lees, can you make note of that? And I'll re-sign that motion when when we get the copy up. Thank you.
Will do.
Thanks a lot. Okay, up next, we have my verbal reports on meetings I attended over the last couple of weeks in regards to boards. I attended the Thunder Bay area Noma Board. Noma was on March the 17th. We discussed natural gas supply, of course. So we're working as there's five municipalities along the corridor, North Shore, what that looks like. COVID-19, obviously, the impacts it's had in all of the communities within the Thunder Bay Noma district. Again, railway taxation was still a hot potato item. It's going to come forward as another resolution of the AGM. Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, of course, that is is key to all of our municipalities that we continue to receive a sustained and predictable amount of money from the provincial government for Ontario, the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. Of course, planning, the Planning Act, follow up from our meetings with the government from the Roma meetings, as well as the different three leagues within the Thunder Bay, the Noma catchment, which is the Rainy River, Canora and Thunder Bay District Municipal Leagues, updates from them. And we were discussing in length the Ontario, Northern Ontario Heritage Fund. We've been funded by them for as many years as I can remember, $50,000 to for Noma to be represented at AMO for obviously travel costs, expenses related to those board members who sit on the AMO Board. We're having a bit of a struggle of getting that clarified with the government, whether it's going to be under the municipal affairs or heritage and whether or not we'll even be receiving the two years that we weren't funded 19 and 20. So we're still struggling with that. We're still moving forward and working on that. Again, we had then our AMO Board meeting on March 26, which represented the AMO Board of 444 municipalities, working with government concerns and issues, both federal and provincial, on the COVID-19, the impacts it's having on all municipalities in Ontario, mental health of individuals. And now, you remember, the March 26 meeting was quite a bit away from how fast the revolving COVID-19 pandemic is hitting us. And now here we are, three weeks later in a full blown lockdown and also a third wave. Talked about budgets, budget rollout at that time was budget of the Ontario Government, the impacts it's going to have and the support it's going to have for municipalities throughout the province. Talked a bit about long term care, broadband, the Omer's Pension Fund, the impacts it has, Waste Management Blue Box System. As you know, we we talked about that, it impacted Marathon directly and how is that going to look for the next four or five years. And then, of course, all the Northern Caucus members talking about the impacts it has on their areas. A lot of it was revolved around COVID-19, as you can appreciate, in regards to the impacts it has not only on the small rural, northern, northeastern and urban centres of Ontario. And of course, the federal gas tax and Community Building Fund, which that was a meeting today we had in regards to that that fund being enhanced and changed. The name of it changed to Community Building Fund rather than the federal gas tax, still administered by AMO. Asset management, long term, sustainable funding, and that was part of all of that. And also had a Police Services Zone One meeting last week. Community, we, big, big part of the topic obviously was a change in regards to we, as we know, the impacts it's having on the community safety plans, how does that look for Marathon? And how's it look for all communities in Ontario under Solicitor General's mandate that she was not going to lift the timelines for the the COVID, through the COVID-19 impacts and the timelines for submitting those community safety plans? So we're working on ours and we hopefully have it done in the timelines that's been set out by the government. And then, of course, the the big thing is the new board rollout, the new board makeup for for the police services boards throughout the province of Ontario and how's that look? So it's it's being, it's being implemented and rolled out as we speak and it'll be laid out. So there was a big part of the discussion around that and I sent off a letter as the board chair to Kevin Holland, who's now the Chair of the Zone One Police Services Boards to. There's a, there's a push from the Ontario's main board, Ontario Police Association's Board, to have board members basically academically educated to the point of university degrees coming on to boards in communities. And I'm, and I'm really frustrated with that because that represents, that agency represents all of us as boards throughout the province, but yet is taking a stance about the education level that individual board members must have to apply to get on a board. We've been over two and a half years without a provincial appointment member to our board. So when you have impacts of restrictions of new board members being academically trained or education requirements of university, it's going to be very, very frustrating, very hard to have members come on to boards and even want to apply to a board, let alone meet the requirements as set out. So I sent the letter off and Kevin's going to take it back down to the the provincial body and argue that and see if we can get some traction. But, you know, things that are made and decisions that are made in Toronto again doesn't reflect what's happening in the real world and rest of our part of our province. So there's lots of changes coming forward with the Police Services and Police Services Act and hopefully we'll we'll get things squared away and have some proper things happening there. And that's about it. If anybody has any questions, I'll definitely take some on any one of those three meetings. I do see Mr. Skorczynski has a hand up.
Thanks, Your Worship. You highlighted two things that I just want to bring council up to speed on where we're at. So one, with respect to the community safety plan. Right now, we're in discussions with our neighbours in Scriber, Terrace Bay and Manitowage to do a joint plan for our four communities, really with the town of Marathon leading the charge. And the thought process is we all fall under DSAB with respect to social services. So it makes sense that we do a joint plan. And from a costing perspective, it's it's more economically viable if we share the costs of developing that plan as we are going to have to hire some professional expertise. So we've just started that discussion process and we'll we'll look to formalize it probably within the next month. And just with respect to the new establishment of police service boards, you're correct that it's a, it's going to be quite an undertaking in Ontario, especially for the small communities. So in our case, we would establish a board with Manitowage because we share that detachment. And I have a meeting with their CAO this Thursday to start to develop that framework on how we would go about putting that in place so that we can both bring forward respective reports to council in a timeframe over the next month or so.
Yes, thank you for that. It's going to be, and there's also going to be an indigenous part too. I think they want, if communities are surrounded by First Nation communities, to have participation from those communities that might be under the police mandate of the OPP. So there's a lot of discussions happening behind the scenes and a lot of, a lot of no answers basically right now. So that's frustrating. So and of course, with COVID and the meetings virtually and not getting informed and having the opportunity, it's it's pretty hard. So anyway, we'll keep on top and see what comes out of it. Anybody else? Okay, great, thank you. Under bylaws, bylaw number 2002 being a bylaw to adopt estimates for the sums required during the year 2021, we'll be presenting a copy to all members for the the budget and I need a mover and a secondary to put that on the floor.
Councillor Valance?
So councillor Valance and councillor De Bouchy, questions of that bylaw? I don't see any hands. We'll call a question. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Kerry. Up next, we have in regards to the submission by Kingsville, Ontario via the resolution received from Kingsville pertaining to Bill C21, an act to amend certain acts and to make certain consequential amendments to the Firearms Act. And further that a copy of the motion be forwarded on to the individual listener on the original resolution request. I need a mover and a secondary to put that on the floor.
I'll move, councillor De Bouchy.
Yes, you'll be in councillor Valance? Okay, any questions, councillor De Bouchy?
Uh, yeah, I can understand some or some municipalities, I'll say Toronto for instance, would want control over the movement of guns, but I think that responsibility should not fall upon municipalities. I think that's a federal or provincial empowerment and I really do not want to get dragged into a situation where, you know, we're, we, meaning the municipality, controls firearms at any point. So I would not, I would support, I guess, this motion that we do not get involved in the transportation, storing or whatever of our firearms in Ontario.
Yes, thank you for that. Absolutely. I wanted to read that therefore be resolved, just so everybody's aware before we get into more discussion. There are both for, it's about the the bylaws specifically to the handgun storage movement and transportation of handguns and the the therefore be resolved that the Corporation of Towne of Kingsville is opposed to the adoption of any bylaws restricting the possession, storage or transportation of legally legally obtained handguns. You're absolutely right. I don't think it's a game that Mr. Valance be playing. Federally and provincially mandated laws under the federal and provincial laws are the ones that should be there. So councillor Lake?
Uh, thanks, Your Worship. I just, the the thing that I was having trouble with on this resolution was seeing what they were actually reacting to. I, the the original, and I may have been just looking for clarification, does the original bill devolve that responsibility to municipalities? In which case, I agree. I would, I would, I don't think that's a municipal responsibility. I just, I haven't seen the original document that they they're referring to.
That that is correct, councillor. The draft bill does contain the ability for municipalities to adopt bylaws with respect to firearms.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Then I agree with your worship that that that's not a municipal responsibility.
Right, but on the first whereas, just so for the public information, municipalities have never been responsible for gun control laws in Canada, period. So there's no need for us to start getting involved with it. Anybody else? I know councillor Jengra had your hand up. Is that okay?
Yeah, I have the same count, same question as councillor Lake.
Okay, perfect. So we're we're opposed to any bylaws being implemented by municipalities? Is the basic, the resolution basically is outlining that therefore be. All good?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, Kerry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, up next, we have a motion that council hereby supports the attached resolution stream from the township of Hudson pertaining to support of fire departments. And further, a copy of the motion be forwarded on to the individual listener on the original resolution request. Move by.
Councillor De Bouchy.
Okay, councillor De Bouchy, councillor Jengra, and I'll just read the therefore be resolved so we can get into this debated, if there's any. Therefore be resolved, the council Corporation Township of Hudson resolves and follows that the federal and provincial governments includes apparatus, training, equipment and structures for fire departments as eligible categories to further infrastructure programs, which will not only provide immediate stimulus to local and provincial and federal economies, given current economic uncertainty, but also assure the safety of Canadians and dedicated firefighters throughout. And that the resolution be forwarded on to the honourable Doug Ford and the Premier of Ontario, Steve Clark, Minister of Civil Affairs and Housing and the other ministers associated with this request. Basically, they want the the government to help borne the cost of the, some of the infrastructure and deficits we're faced with. Any other questions? Councillor Lake?
Uh, yeah, just a question around, I mean, we already, we put a lot of time and energy into that recreation complex infrastructure proposal. And even with all that work and what I would have said was an excellent and professional kind of thing, we weren't successful. So would allowing firefighting infrastructure or projects into that infrastructure stream make it even more difficult for municipalities to access infrastructure funding? That'd be my only concern here and that's probably a question for Mr. Skorczynski.
Well, certainly anytime you introduce more competition into the funding streams, you know, it becomes obviously, you know, less availability to those funds. So, you know, I would say, you know, if if we're, you know, purely being self-serving in terms of looking after Marathon, then, you know, this isn't something that I would support administratively. You know, traditionally, these types of funding programs supporting things like firefighting have not been included in Canada-Ontario infrastructure programs. So, you know, I think in terms of what we have on the books, then I would say that we would not be in favor of it administratively.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Valance?
Yeah, Your Worship, what would be the likelihood that the premier would just push it back and download it back on to other municipalities anyway and make it once again back onto our plate?
So I think Mr. Skorczynski is is actually right. When the more competition you enter into any type of funding models, whether it's provincial or federal or combined, it just, it really matters what we're we're funding. And I, and I know the the municipality of Hudson is a very small community and they find it hard to to help sustain and fund their fire departments for equipment and replacement of vehicles. And, you know, we know, we just bought a new pumper at $600,000, so we know the cost. But at the same time, we we have to bear that that burden from from our, to our ratepayers and say, we need, you need fire protection, we're going to have that. So so that, my feeling is similar to Mr. Skorczynski. I don't support the resolution to to be more request on the federal and provincial governments for more funding. Councillor De Bouchy?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to echo, I don't support this as something that becomes part of the pool that everything become, gets pulled out of. Because Toronto's assets for one year would eat up any kind of proposed funding for firefighting equipment. What I propose and and I think we've moved this or had requested this for a long time is make the calls for the is make the calls or the things that, the charges that are fees we get from highway calls and whatever may be, that those things should increase. And I think also, given that if, you know, home insurance covers your fire protection and some costs that are associated with those things. And I think those are the things that would be more advantageous to all fire departments. And if I'm wrong, our fire chief can correct me, but those fees for services or things that we can build back on would, would help fund infrastructure or the capitals we need. Because that's basically where we pulled some of our money out for our tankers was from those kind of reserves, calls for services, whatever it may be. And I think that's a better avenue to go after than it is to say, let's set up another pot that we will never be eligible for because we can, you know, we're a have community than saying, you know, let's, you know, as opposed to the fees for services, because we do a lot of highway calls. That's where we can generate the revenue to, you know, supplement or to, you know, upkeep our, our infrastructure or our hardware.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I see no other hands. So I'm going to call a question. All in favor of this resolution?
No. No.
No.
No.
So that sounds like unanimous no. So it's defeated. Thank you very much. And we will share with Hudson when we have a Noma meeting, AGM, if they have concerns, why we addressed it that way if they do come back and ask. So up next, I have a council motion that council hereby supports the attached resolution received from the town of Orangeville pertaining to Bill 257. And further, a copy of this motion be forwarded on to the individual listed on the original resolution request. Move by.
Councillor DeBouchy?
Councillor Lake?
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Before I go there, it's a therefore be resolved that the Minister of Infrastructure and the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing request to withdraw Schedule 3 from Bill 257, that a copy of the resolution be circulated to the premier and Sylvia Jones, Minister of Infrastructure, Municipal Affairs and Housing, as well as Credit Valley Conservation and the Ontario Municipalities Act. So it's, it's about land use planning and systems led by provincial policies. Okay, questions? Councillor DeBouchy?
Okay, so I had to look up Bill 257 because from my understanding in, in what it is, is a bill to support broadband and infrastructure expansion. Now, the note that they made that they were opposed to was it gave the municipal zoning office authority to give right of way through what has been deemed, I guess, sensitive natural areas. Is that what they're, they want to pose? Are they saying that they want to protect the environmental issues? But shouldn't, but don't they have to go through the same environmental assessment to run wires and infrastructure towers through sensitive areas or any areas?
Uh, so Mr Skorczynski, give me an opportunity to speak on that.
Yeah, so this isn't specific to broadband, although you're correct, broadband is contained in Bill 257. Schedule 3, and this really kind of came to a head recently in Stratford, where council voted down a land use planning request and it was subsequently overseeded by the ministry at the provincial level. And it involved an area of natural concern. So what they're asking for in this is that the, once the municipality makes the decision with respect to municipal property, that there's not another mechanism that gets triggered at the provincial level that can override that local decision. And that's what Schedule 3 is.
Anybody else, councillor DeBouchy?
Uh, oh, sorry, but isn't that what, I can't remember what it's called, the municipal review board? You, you can challenge any decision by a municipality and go forward to the tribunal to ask for reconsideration or somebody higher up to make a decision is if it was within our purview, did we did it correctly? Do we even have control over it? I can't remember the exact municipal board.
Yeah, the OMB, the Ontario Municipal Board, yeah.
But isn't that the infrastructure that, that goes through as, you know, if you, if, even if council disagrees with a decision made by province?
So you're right, it will, it could go to that, but Mr Skorczynski is absolutely right. The provincial policy statement is a longstanding, necessary, good planning, environmental, social, the ministries, the Ontario overrides the municipal land use or official plan. So then you, then it goes to the OMB, then it becomes very long, onerous and expensive. So I think what they're trying to say is that if the municipality says no, it's no, it's within municipal boundaries. It should be the municipalities' right. But then again, and there, it goes back to my argument ever since I can remember, we have our parents, which is the provincial government. They tell us what to do, when to do it and what time to go to bed. Then the federal government gets a little bit freedom with us because they're our grandparents, but yet they still govern the provincial governance. They don't govern the municipal governance. So here's, we've got our parents to deal with all the time, no matter what, and they're going to tell us what to do. So they're asking us to support a resolution to not allow the provincial government to tell us what to do in regards to the municipal official plan or municipal boundaries.
And your worship, just, just to follow up on that, this is much more applicable down in Southern Ontario. Uh, where, you know, where you have a lot more conservation areas, a lot more protected parks lands. Whereas, you know, in Marathon, we're obviously geographically isolated and we don't see that type of competition for land development.
But, but not only that, Mr Skorczynski, and even in Marathon, even with our boundaries, the biggest area, it's Crown Land still. So, so we have an official plan for the town proper, but within the municipal boundaries, we can do things for sure, but we are still under Crown Land, it's Crown Land ownership. So I see Mr DeBouchy has a hand up again or no? Okay, all good. So with the mover and a secondaire's permission, I'll call a question. All in favor of this motion?
No.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Carrie. Okay, anything else before we adjourn? So as you know, we're in lockdown and I know Mr Skorczynski is working very hard. We're meeting with, with Dr Demille on a weekly basis, as I mentioned earlier, and we will work with our NASH team and get understanding of what's happening in regards to our community from week to week under the community dashboard. Do we get updates on those daily? I just want to encourage everybody to continue to be safe out there and well, let's try to get out of this. Maybe get this blowout, get outside and shovel, have a little bit of fun. But other than that, be safe out there, wear your masks, keep social distance and, and wash your hands. I have a motion here to adjourn at the hour of 4:57 PM. Move by.
Councillor Valance?
Councillor Valance, councillor Lake, thank you very much all and have a good night.
Have a good week, everyone.
Night, everyone.